Therefore, a quorum is present and the meeting is qualified to consider the agenda items. And from there, we're going to move to our flag salute. The East Central High School JROTC, under the direction of Major Mike Prescott, will lead us in tonight's flag salute.
Color guard, post. Would you please join me in the pledge? Salute. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
Board Member Keller, would you please introduce tonight's cadets?
I would be happy to. Again, under the instruction of Major Michael Prescott, with Principal Mike Crace, we have our pledge leader, Cadet Sergeant Allison Fuentes. Our color guard included Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Yanni Leva, Cadet Major Adrian Hurd, Cadet First Lieutenant Goaten Bing, Cadet Sergeant Fernando Padillo. You guys did an incredible job. Thank you so much.[184.01][184.01](APPLAUSE). If I may, President Schreiber, the major informed me that in our color guard back there, we have a newly-mentored member of the Air Force as well as a National Guardsman. So, thank you, guys.[198.01][198.01](APPLAUSE).
No shade on all the fantastic color guards that come before us, but I have to say, I feel like y'all's uniform and your shoes and everything is perfect. Really, really high compliments to you all. Great job. I want to remind everybody that wants to address the board that they should see Ms. Cindy Hutchings right here at the end. Once we approve the consent agenda, there's no additional speakers permitted. We are going to approve the agenda, but first, Dr. Guest, are there any changes?
No, Madam President, we don't have any changes tonight.
I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I'll call for the vote, Ms. Faith.
Aye.
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 We want to welcome everyone. Thank you for being here. I see a City Year jacket out there, which I'm excited to see. And I know we have some special presentations this evening, so, Dr. Guest, if you want to present those.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam President, and members of our Board of Education, and all Tulsans who are joining us either here in person or watching. We do have special presentations tonight, and I want to start with one of our school principals from Carver Middle School. We have Principal Elton Sykes, who's here with us tonight. And he's been patiently waiting the opportunity to tell us about his experience traveling overseas this past summer in an effort to expand really exciting work that's happening at Carver Middle School. So through the OU Confucius Institute, Principal Sykes traveled to China. He had the opportunity to tour different cities and climb the Great Wall and visit schools, and I won't give the whole list because I don't want to, you know, take away from your presentation, but we're excited to hear a little bit about your trip and really pleased to hear more about your plans for how what you experienced will begin to see even better enhancements to the work that's happening already at Carver Middle School. Thank you, Principal Sykes.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Guest. Ni hao, which means welcome and hello in China, in Chinese. Thank you for the opportunity, Madam President and Dr. Guest, to speak to you about my journey to China. Carver Middle School is a member of the University of Oklahoma Confucius Institute. The Confucius Institute seeks to support Oklahoma educators in their efforts to teach the Chinese language and to assist Oklahoma businesses that wish to do business in the Chinese-speaking world. Every year, the Confucius Institute sends a group of educators to China to experience China firsthand, build partnerships with schools in China, exchange ideas, and be fully immersed in the Chinese culture for two weeks. With encouragement from Carver's Chinese teacher, Jennifer Doty, I applied for the program and was accepted to participate along with 10 other Oklahoma educators, three from the Tulsa area and the rest from Norman Public Schools. After an amazing and long 13-hour flight, we were in Beijing, China. This by far was one of the most exciting trips I've ever taken. As you see through the many pictures taken here, I was truly able to get a sampling of Chinese life. I got to climb the Great Wall and see other major landmarks, use an eastern toilet, experience Chinese (LAUGH) interesting, and meet over 50 Chinese school leaders from some of the poorest parts of China. As an educator, some of the most memorable moments are when I had the opportunity to visit Chinese public schools and see their students. I learned that the education system in China is totally different than the United States. For example, the Chinese government only pays for and requires students to attend school from the first and ninth grades. Kindergarten is not required and, in fact, is very expensive for students to attend. Every student, starting in their middle school years, which is fourth and fifth grade in China, have to take a foreign language. Majority of the students take English. Just our students in the United States take the ACT or SAT to enter college. The Chinese students take a major exam as well called the Gaokou, the high test. Unlike the United States, this test has a major determination or influence of what college you may be admitted to in China. Simply put, this test gets to determine not only what college you may attend, but what jobs may be available to you. Another difference is that the discipline expectations and some social norms are different in the U.S. than China. For example, at schools, they do not suspend or give out lunch detentions, after-school detentions, or in-school suspensions. The teachers and the administrators are expected to come up with plans to ensure the students stay in the classroom and are successful. However, if they cannot ensure the student, help the student, the student's parent is called, and it is a really big deal if the school has to call your parent. Not definitely different than the United States. After taking this journey to China and thinking about how we at Carver can continuously get better and move our school towards the vision of the district's vision, Destination Excellence, we have to continue to increase opportunities for our scholars to take foreign languages. At Carver, we now have two Spanish teachers, where one teacher teaches full-emergent classes. We also went from a half-time Chinese teacher to a full-time Chinese teacher to be able to offer Chinese to all students, sixth through eighth, who want to take advantage of it. As a middle-years program school, one of our pillars is language acquisition. We want it to be true at Carver and other schools that students are able to acquire and learn new languages that will make them more globally competitive in our changing world. So, we're going to continue to work to expand opportunities at Carver, and we hope the board will also work to expand opportunities at other schools so that we can attract more students to our district. It would be very powerful if we could say that students can enter Tulsa Public Schools and leave having mastered a language, which makes them more globally competitive. Thank you for listening.[639.11][639.11](APPLAUSE).
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Very exciting, and absolutely, you are correct that this is work that we are enthusiastically supporting. It's something Tulsa is known for, and really wonderful to see expansion of access to Chinese classes. Also, earlier this month, several of our amazing theater and drama teachers were recognized during Theater Tulsa's Broadway Ball Gala. These teachers were named the 2018 Champions of the Arts, and they are individuals from the Tulsa area who have been strong advocates for local arts and have shown a commitment to expanding upon and teaching and preparing future artists. We want to take a moment to recognize these teachers and to thank them for the tremendous work they do in our high schools, and you can see that their names are listed here on the screen. Some of them are here tonight. A few of us could not, a few of them could not join us because there are rehearsals happening tonight, so if you're here with us, we'd love for you to stand and be recognized, and I'll call you by your name. So the 2018 Theater Tulsa Champions of the Arts are Mike Buckendorf of East Central High School, Amber Harrington of Edison High School. She's definitely not able to be here because they have a dress rehearsal. Jennifer Lawrence from Rogers High School, who's here.[735.82][735.82](APPLAUSE). And of course, with her principal, Principal Nikki Dennis. Sean Rooney of Booker T. Washington High School, who's here.[748.69][748.69](APPLAUSE). Congratulations to you, and thank you. Jason Shores of Memorial High School, who's also unable to be here because of a scheduled rehearsal. And Christina Vasella of Hale High School, who's here.[762.93][762.93](APPLAUSE). Yes, with her principal, of course, the photo app. Thank you so much, Dr. Riley, for being here to support. And thank you all, each of you, so much for your incredible work in our classrooms and also your advocacy for the arts more broadly. This is incredible recognition. So to tell us a little bit more about the arts programs that we offer throughout the district, we'd like to introduce our Academic Coordinator of Fine Arts, Joanne Caldwell.[793.43][793.43](APPLAUSE).
Good evening. Thank you so much for letting me be here this evening. And again, congratulations to you guys. In Tulsa Public Schools, the arts are essential to learning, and we continually work to broaden the arts. The theater people embody all parts of the arts. They combine lighting, drama, dance, music, visual arts, scenery, literature. They also support the arts in the elementary school and middle school. Amber Harrington is in charge of our Speech Arts Festival that we do, and all elementary students get to participate in that at their site level. They support the arts in middle school by taking their theater groups to different middle schools and encouraging those students to be part of that. Research supports the importance of the relationship between the learning art, academic achievement, and social development, and arts integration uses fine arts and performing arts to combine those and provide a strong structure. Our core values of equity are so evident in theater arts because you get an equity of voice that you don't get anywhere else. And also, the joy in learning, you know, the joy that's inspired by these people. So again, congratulations and thank you very much.
Thank you.[883.13][883.13](APPLAUSE). Absolutely, the arts have had a long history at Tulsa Public Schools, and while it's certainly challenging over the last decade to be able to hold on to them, our district and this Board of Education have made concerted effort to make sure that we do everything we can within the budget that we have to be able to keep our arts programs going. They are absolutely essential, and I appreciate you describing it that way, Ms. Caldwell. That concludes our presentations for this evening, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Guest. We will move to Item D, Approval of the Minutes from September 17th and October 8th, 2018, regular meetings, and September 14th and September 26th, 2018, special meetings. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion regarding the minutes from those days? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, Ms. Faith.
Aye.
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 Epstein.
Aye.
Moving to our consent agenda. Remember that the consent agenda is something that was discussed in full two weeks ago and even possibly prior to that, and now comes as an omnibus because those matters have generally had a full vetting. However, after we have a motion on the table, the questions are certainly appropriate. Is there a...
It is approval.
Second.
Any questions on any items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, Ms. Wester.
Aye.
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 Aye. Moving to our action agenda. Item F1, Renew the Annual Subscription and Support with Volat Software Company of McHenry, Illinois for the period of November 1, 2018 through October 31st, 2019, for the district's Destiny Library and Textbook Resource Management Systems. The cost of this is not to exceed $100,000. Any discussion or questions on this item? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, Ms. Wester.
Aye.
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 Aye. Item F2, Approve a Real Estate Exchange Agreement with the City of Tulsa to exchange 10 acres of land owned by the district and known as the Posey Property for 10 acres of land owned by the city located adjacent to Celia Clinton Elementary School, both as more particularly described in the agreement as Exhibits A and B respectively. There's no cost to the district here, and this allows for the building of EduCare 4 adjacent and immediately west of Celia Clinton Elementary. Are there any questions on this item? Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, sorry. Now are there any questions on this item?
Yes. Well, this was a, I'm glad to see this happening. This is a smart deal. Thank you, facilities and operations people, and Jorge and Chris and team and everybody that has worked on it, and I'm really pleased that we're going to be able to move forward with EduCare, but this was a property that over the last few years, we've made the move at the board to declare it to be surplus so we could talk to other parties about transferring ownership. And in this case, I'm really pleased that we're working so closely with the city because these are public assets that we're able to, on both sides of proposition, better utilize this, and so it's a real win-win thing, and I really applaud the staff for moving forward on it and finally getting it done, and they're kind of complicated to do an intergovernmental scenario like this, but we did, and I think it benefits the taxpayers or taxpaying constituents. So I want to thank everybody that worked so hard on it.
Dr. Decker.
Thank you, President Schreiber. I know we had at least one previous agenda item related to the building of EduCare 4, so I just wanted to ask for my information and really the public also, but how is this different from the prior agenda items on EduCare 4?
Thank you, Dr. Decker. The reason that we're presenting this before is the, there will be a restriction on the deed, and that'll cover the new property. As long as Celia Clinton isn't in educational use, then the land will be deeded to TPS.
Thank you. So, I've thought a little about whether I have a conflict on this agenda item, given, and I've decided that I do not, because I am not currently an employee of EduCare. I will be in January, I want to declare, but I'm not currently now, and I believe there's no dollar exchange on this information, on this action item. And then third, it's a small restriction that's been added to the language, so I will be voting on this item.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, Ms. Faith.
Aye.
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 Aye. Moving to Item F3, Approve an Amendment to the Contract with Commercial Risk Services, Tulsa, Oklahoma, that was approved on June 18, 2018, Item E102, to include an emergency management specialist in the contract. The cost is not to exceed $50,000 from the general fund, and by enlisting the services of a contractor to perform emergency management responsibilities through its staff, the district will be able to consolidate related work and thereby capture efficiencies and increase coordination of risk management and safety management. Is there a motion to approve Item F3? Who's approval?
Second.
Discussion on Item F3? I do have some questions. I think this is pretty generalized language, and so, emergency management services in terms of a weather event, terrorist attack, what are we talking about, and how does this consolidate work and capture efficiencies for us?
I'll dive in for President Schreiber, and I would welcome any of the members of the Operations Committee to share information as well. I know you guys talked about this, I believe, last week with Chief Robles. We had a position. That position is vacant at this point in time. Doc Spires was a previous Emergency Management Director, and he did everything from alerting us when bad weather was coming in, helping us make decisions around the cancellation of school, to making sure that we have all of the appropriate policies and procedures in place for active shooter drills to fire drills and so forth. So he'd monitor all of that. That position monitors all of that. So what we would be doing between now and the end of this fiscal year is working with CRS to have a full-time person who is responsible for those functions in the organization. That allows us to realize efficiencies by leveraging the risk management organization. We're already using rolling emergency management into it. It also gives us the opportunity to identify if we would want to proceed down that path in the future or not. CRS's contract is up for renewal as well by the end of this fiscal year, so we'll be reevaluating that contract in its entirety. I hope that answered most questions.
Yes, thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Percival.
It seems like at the committee meeting, we received some information that the company does, performs this service in some other large school districts and has some experience, and so since we've lost a person, we're going to stop getting with contracting. While we're kind of reevaluating whether there's kind of some efficiencies to combine a couple of things, it seems to make sense that the committee would...
It does, and it gives us a chance to benefit from an organization that does have that experience. I agree with you about that, Board Member Percival. And obviously, when it comes to school safety, this is not an area where you want to get someone, you know, who's learning that while they're there. We need to make sure that we have no gap in terms of having the support that's necessary for us to make sure that we're doing everything that we need to do to manage emergencies within, and that means prevention, preparation, and everything that's related to that. And as our deputy superintendent said, it gives us a chance to experience this here for a few months and see whether or not it's an alternative that we want to continue in the longer term, or whether we want to just use it in the interim while we're looking for someone to fill the position.
Thank you, Dr. Guest. If there's no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. Ms. Faith?
Aye.
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 Aye. Item F4, Clarify and Revise Certain School Board Policies Relating to Student Enrollment, Specifically Policies 2202, Student Admissions, 2206, School Transfers of In-District Students, and 2209, International Exchange Student Enrollment. We had a robust discussion about this at our last meeting, but we are via these policies, clarifying district policies and improving some as well to student enrollment practices to align more with our values and objectives. And then, once these are in place, we'll have the regulations that pair with them. Are there any, is there any further discussion about this? These policies that we'll approve tonight? What, darn it? May have a motion on Item F4.
So moved.
Second. Are there any further questions or new questions regarding these policies that will stand for vote for approval? I'll just say, I am really happy about these, and I said that last week, but I know it's a lot of work to get a common enrollment date, and that there's just a lot of improvements that should streamline things for parents who are seeking to have a transfer or apply to a magnet school, and also acknowledge some of the non-cookie cutter scenarios that we see where some nuance in human judgment is required, and superintendent has some discretion in that area. So I'm happy to see these changes, and I appreciate all of the work of the Policy Committee and Dr. Guest and her staff on this. If there's no questions or further discussion, I'll call for the vote, Ms. Faith.
Aye.
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 Aye. That will move us to the Information Agenda, which Dr. Guest will present, and I just want to say that when we get to G4, Mr. Huff Heinz, we will call you up, and you can speak to that item, and he's going to speak to G6 as well at that time.
Thank you again, Madam President, and Board Members and fellow Tulsans. Many of you know that information items come before the board for discussion and consideration. They're not acted upon until a future meeting. If they do come back for a future meeting, they'll either come as consent item or an action item, and possibly information again if they need more discussion. Item G1 recommends renewal of a one-year agreement with Medis Associates for grant program evaluation services that are related to our work with the School Leaders Program, and this is through September 30th, 2019, and we have our Deputy Superintendent and our Chief of Talent and Learning here to answer any questions that board members may have about this item.
I do have a question, and forgive me for not knowing this information. The cost, the grant funds is, this is the grant that you got from the U.S. Department of Ed, so that's the, you're using that money to cover for...
That's correct.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Board Member Wester. Items G2 and G3 will be presented by our Chief Learning and Talent Officer, Devin Fletcher. Mr. Fletcher?
Thank you, Dr. Guest, Madam President, and members of the board. Item G2 supports the work in our Exceptional Student Services Department to enter into participation agreement with the Oklahoma State Department and the Public Consulting Group for the purposes of obtaining Medicaid reimbursement for Tulsa Public Schools. As you all recall, this is an item that came across the agenda last year, which allows for us to work with the Oklahoma Health Authority through PCG in order to receive federal reimbursement for Medicaid. This is slightly different from last year because it eliminates some of the bill-back work that we've got to do, and so it streamlines the process, and that's why you're seeing it on the agenda again. Pause for questions if there are any. And Item G3 is routine. It supports our Talent Management Department and routine staffing items. It supports our Talent Management Department and routine staffing items. One thing that I will call out is that all salaries that are listed are effective annualized rates, regardless of the length of their effective date of contract, and you'll see that that language will shift on every agenda item going forward. So just a call out there. I'll pause for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher. So we're moving on to G4, and we have a speaker.
Mr. Huff Heinz, if you want to come and speak to items G4 and G6 at this time. I'll just quickly, do you want to say what G4 and G6 relate to? Dr. Gist?
I can, yes. Or Deputy Superintendent. It's all right, I'll do it.
Just so everyone knows the topic. G6 is relating to sanctioning several booster clubs.
Yes, it's our annual process that we go through to make sure that the booster clubs that we have are, have their official recognition by the Board, so it's something that we do annually. They tend to be rolling. And G4 is related to Tulsa Term, which is a very exciting new program that you'll hear more about in just a moment, but it's a partnership that we have with Holland Hall, and it is an opportunity for 12 students to spend a semester with Tulsa as their classroom, essentially.
Go ahead, Mr. Huff Heinz.
Thank you. Peace, yes, peace. Greetings to our Honorable Superintendent, Dr. Gist, our Madam President, Suzanne Hutchings, Suzanne Schreiber. I wrote on my paper here to thank Ms. Hutchings for giving me the right pronunciation for your first name, which is pretty basic, but anyway, Suzanne, beautiful, beautiful name, Suzanne Schreiber, thank you. And each of our honorable Tulsa Public School Board Members and honorable staff and team, we are grateful for all the teachers and citizens of this great city, Tulsa, Oklahoma. It's a joy to be with you on this 23rd day of October in the year of our loving Lord, Jesus Christ, 2018. Yes. Design and Innovation, G4, recommendation, enter into a memorandum of understanding with Holland Hall School, Tulsa, Oklahoma, to provide district students with independent study opportunities through Holland Hall's externship opportunity, Tulsa Term, during the spring semester of the 2018-2019 school year. Cost, no cost to the district. Rationale, Holland Hall School has created a nonsecular, off-campus, semester-long experimental learning experience called Tulsa Term. Tulsa Term will provide rich and full school-day learning opportunities in which students gain firsthand experience identifying problems, creating solutions, and making a difference in their community. This memorandum of understanding allows Holland Hall School and Tulsa Public Schools to work together to provide six district high school students and six Holland Hall High School students' participation in the Tulsa Term externship program, excerpted from an article by the Reverend Bert Beibens, primary school head, which most of this you've already heard from Dr. Gist. Anyway, pertaining to Holland Hall School, we can find on Holland Hall School's website, they offer religious studies, including a nine-weeks course on the Gospels, which is good, because in them, we can see Jesus is the way, the truth, and the life, and through His shed blood, we can have forgiveness of sins. Also, chapel services. Chapel services at All Saints Chapel are designed to invite all students, no matter what their background, to reflect on spiritual matters. The aim of these experiences is to expose our students to the beliefs, practices, and rich heritage of the Judeo-Christian tradition. I am supportive of this externship proposal. In schools where Jesus Christ is honored and His words are revered, well, improvements and harmony happen. The rationale on this is because Jesus is alive, just, good, and is God, He will cause things to work out, work together for good. Financial services, yes, to item G6. Recommendation, approve sanctioning of the following booster clubs and parent/teacher associations, which I have not included here, very many of them, with Board Policy 5707 for the 2018-2019 fiscal year. It is encouraging to see these many excellent associations and booster clubs. Obviously, our students, our children, and our families benefit greatly when teachers and parents unite, offering ideas and services to see individuals and teams excel. Encouraging, inspiring, and empowering lives lives big in Tulsa Public Schools, and is a joy to see. Thank you, family, and thank you, President Schreiber, for your excellent leadership.
Thank you. Go ahead, Dr. Gist.
Absolutely. So we'll have our Deputy Superintendent speak to items G4 and 5, which are related.
We already know a bit about G4, so I'm not going to repeat everything that Dr. Gist has shared already, and a bit of the description that Mr. Huff Heinz shared. I will draw out some additional highlights. We have 12 students participating in this partnership between Tulsa Public Schools and Holland Hall. Really exciting. Six of those students are Tulsa Public Schools juniors and seniors. Three students are from Hale High School. Two students are from Webster High School, and one student is from Booker T., in case you're wondering which high schools are participating. And then, of course, six students from Holland Hall. It's going to happen in the spring semester of this academic year, 18-19. And all 12 students will spend each school day together for the entire spring semester, engaged in learning around our city. There are three teach, three adults, three, I'm going to say educators, involved, two Holland Hall teachers, and one former Tulsa Public Schools teacher who's now at 36 degrees north. Tulsa Term is designed to empower our students to make a difference in our city and the broader world while participating in this semester-long experiential learning opportunity, and this opportunity provides students direct access to the city so they can engage in relevant, meaningful assignments. With each unit of study, students will develop a better understanding of the places, people, policies, and uniqueness to the Tulsa area, and will also take charge of their learning and become agents of change in their community. So it's really what Destination Excellence is all about. Finally, in case you're wondering about those nitty-gritty important things like credit, students will receive academic credit for their semester of work, which will consist of half a credit of English IV, half a credit of Social Studies, and one and a half elective credits. I'll pause for any questions.
President Schreiber.
This is really exciting opportunity. I do want to ask a question about cost, because I see there's no cost here to the district. Is there a cost to the students who are participating?
I don't believe that there is, and will make, there is not. Chief Fletcher just said there is not.
That's amazing. What a great opportunity for them.
It's awesome. We're very excited.
Very excited, and I think that G5 helps to further explain why there's no cost to our students. There is a cost to the district. So G5 is a recommendation to enter into a contract with Modus Rise from Tulsa, Oklahoma, to provide transportation services to students participating in Tulsa Term during the spring semester of 2018-19. That cost is not to exceed $5,100. Tell you a little bit about Modus. Modus is a startup company here in Tulsa that works to alleviate transportation barriers for Tulsa students ages 13 to 24. Drivers are vetted. Modus volunteers that will go through background checks both with Modus and Tulsa Public Schools. Through this partnership with Modus, Tulsa Term students will have transportation available to them each day of the Tulsa Term semester. Here's how it works. Modus will pick up students from their home high schools, take them to Tulsa Term locations, and then return them, provide return transport in the afternoon. Students will continue to have the option to utilize the TPS bus service from their stop to their home high school, and then Modus will pick them up at their home high school. And again, because of the small number of students, we're talking about 12 students here, six of ours, it's more feasible, both financially and logically, to utilize Modus in lieu of TPS transportation.
I'm excited to see Modus used in this expanded realm. Mostly, it's been used for health care services, and it seems like such a great idea, and I know it was piloted through the United Way, and it just is something that I'm glad to see expanding, and I hope takes hold in this project, but many others, where we are dealing with the transportation issues that the city of Tulsa has, and really comes up short for everyone, but particularly kids. So I'm excited to see that Modus is going to be participating in this.
Any other questions? Ms. Marshall.
Back to G4. How were the students and the adults selected to participate in that program?
I'm going to see if Emily has more knowledge on this. I'm pinch hitting a bit this evening, so we'll see if we can get you some more information.
Thank you.
Thank you. Students were selected based on the Tulsa Beyond, so this is essentially off of a pilot in the lab, in the design lab, and within the Tulsa Beyond schools, so the majority of them. So students were identified and went through an application process, and between the school leader and Holland Hall, they were selected.
So did you get applications from all Tulsa Beyond schools?
No, uh-uh. Did we engage all Tulsa Beyond schools? Yes. And all schools, all high schools in general were engaged in this, prior to the lab absorbing it.
Ms. Keller.
Thank you.
So, I'm sorry, Ms. Henn, just to be clear, all of the high schools were allowed to have applicants, or just the Tulsa Beyond schools?
So all of the high schools were allowed to have applicants, and then we, the lab took on the project as a pilot within the Tulsa Beyond schools. So that's why you see a Booker T. student involved in it, and then Hale and Webster were the ones that had applicants.
And for the Board, for the Board Members who are part of the Teaching and Learning Committee, this is something that we brought last year.
I don't think, I can't hear.
Sorry. For the Board Members that were part of the Teaching and Learning Committee, this was something that we brought last year. And originally, it started out as a district-wide initiative. We explored a number of different conversations and topics around ensuring that we had a diverse pool of student applicants from all cross-sections of the district, that, you know, part of the reason why Modus became part of the conversation is to ensure that we had student access to, you know, be a part of the experience. Given that we were piloting the work in Tulsa Beyond, it narrowed the focus to a small set of schools that met the cross-section from a diversity across our organization as well as the city, and gave us an opportunity to do small-scale work in a really targeted way, so that we were able and poised to expand over time for the first-year rollout. So just wanted to provide some background context as to how we got here.
So I just want to be sure that we're being clear. So what, it sounds like we're saying is that every school, that there was information shared for students to apply, and then there was a particular targeted effort around the schools that are part of Tulsa Beyond. Is that the way to think about, is that a correct summary of what we just heard?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Emily.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So because, for example, for those of you who may not be as familiar with Tulsa Beyond, Hale High School and Webster High School, two of the three high schools who have students in the program are part of Tulsa Beyond, but Booker T. Washington is not, and I think that's part of why there's some questions about what we were just describing, so I wanted to make sure that we answered that fully. So thank you, Ms. Marshall, and Ms. Keller.
Thank you. I look forward to hearing more about this. It's a very exciting program.
Other questions?
Absolutely. We are also very excited and feel confident that we're going to learn a lot about it for the schools that are going through the design process right now, and would love to have more students to be able to participate in a program like Tulsa Term. So moving on to G6, so we talked about G6 a little bit a moment ago. G6 is, again, is the item that is our annual process for sanctioning booster clubs and parent/teacher associations. This is in accordance with Board Policy and is an annual effort. It tends to come in waves, because different groups are ready at different times during the fall, so this is a set of those schools that are available, or are prepared, rather, to come before the Board, and certainly ready to answer any questions that you all may have about this item. And then items G7 through G13 will be presented by our Executive Director of Bond Projects, Mr. Chris Hudgens. Mr. Hudgens.
Thank you, Dr. Gist, President Schreiber, and Board Members. Items G7 is to approve the purchase of exterior glass to Advantage Glass or enhance secure entries. The secure entries are part of the 2015 bond issue. Item G8 is to extend a unit cross contract with FADCO to provide millwork for our various projects throughout the year. Items G9, 10, 11, and 12 all deal with a pool repurposing project, East Central High School. This project's currently out in the bidding stage, and we're going to bring it back for consent. The repurposing of pools is all part of the 2015 bond issue, and we're going to enter into contract, we'll assign them, and then we'll approve a GMP to the construction manager, which is Trigon on the project. And item G13 is to amend a particular project, E7, that was approved October 8. The correct amount was inadvertently put down, and the $1,286,200 is correct. Are there any questions on those items?
Just have one question. How many pools do we have left in the district?
I'm going to have to get back with you on that, but there is a lot less, eight to 10.
Thank you.
Those are information items.
Thank you, Dr. Gist. Thank you to your team. We'll move to staff reports. I know we have one, we are all excited about the interactivity of it.
Yes, we do have a staff report tonight, and we are going to be talking about the Oklahoma State Testing Program, or as many people in Oklahoma educators know it, as OSTP. This is our state assessment. And while this is not new information, this is, these are assessment results that were released previously. We have been digging into these results and wanted to come back to talk with the Board and the public about them a little bit more. We have our Chief Data and Analytics Officer, Mr. Stephen Fedor, here. We also have, of course, our Chief Learning and Talent Officer, Devin Fletcher. They will be providing a collaborative report on the Oklahoma State Testing Program tonight. Mr. Fedor.
Thank you, Superintendent Gist, Board President Schreiber, members of the Board. So really excited to talk to you about this information. As Dr. Gist mentioned, some of this we've heard about and seen before in doses, but wanted to get a little more granular today, and there is a small interactive portion, which I'm really excited about. If you see me looking over, it's the notes don't actually show up here, and I want to make sure there's a few things I capture. So just starting off with OSTP, as it's referred to, the Oklahoma State Testing Program, replaced what was the OCCT, which was the Oklahoma Core Curriculum Test, I believe was what the acronym stood for, and that happened in the 16-17 school year. One big thing about it was it was a more rigorous, exam with more rigorous cut scores. The text up top is taken directly from the State Department of Edu, State Department of Education, and it says that Oklahoma educators desire to have a measure of student performance to ensure students would be better prepared for post-secondary success. As we look to prepare students to be college and career-ready, we need to understand, are they on that path? And the OSTP aims to do so. As you see on the diagram here, the Oklahoma State Testing Program is delivered in grades three through eight. Math and English. Program is delivered in grades three through eight, math and English Language Arts for all grade levels. Science is tested in grades five and eight. In addition to that, in grade 11, students must take either the ACT or SAT and that's selected by the district. We in Tulsa Public Schools deliver the SAT. Students are obviously welcome to take the ACT on their own as well and we support them with that in some cases. So that's the setup. We hear the word "assessment" often and our mind goes to, on this diagram, the far-right side, this idea of a summative assessment where we envision it with a student sitting down, pen, paper, or pencil and paper often, a Scantron, a booklet, a certain amount of time, and it happens at the end of the year. Assessment and an assessment system is far more complex than that and also not as large of an assessment at times. So I'll come back to this in a second, but I'm going to walk us through an activity. So I did teach second and fourth grade and I'll take myself back there to a sec, for a second. So this is me modeling. So what we're gonna do in a second, you're gonna get some questions that pop up. You each have a mini whiteboard, a expo marker, and a makeshift eraser. And I think it's more typical that teachers have this or in fact, a lot of that going on. And so I'll ask a question. So if I were to say four times six, you would simply write 24. And you don't show it, you let out your other classmates, write it down, and then when I say, okay, ready, then you go ahead and show it. You don't need to write the full question, just the answer. And then big enough so I can see it as the instructor. The best check for understanding is say, got it, got it. That's not true, but I think everyone's got it. So we're gonna start with a warm-up and an easy one. Okay, we're ready?
Are there any accommodations provided?
If needed, yes. Just do your best, I think is the answer here. All right, so this is the first one.
Is this gonna be graded?
Okay, just kidding. This, this is not graded. Extra credit if you can get that. It's three letters is the answer ultimately. But let's go with this one. So everyone do it and you'll hold on to it. And see, most of you get it? Okay, go. Okay, great. And go ahead and erase. Thank you. I want you to erase. Go ahead and do this one. Go. Awesome, thank you. And you can erase. So what you may have noticed there, there were a couple of, there were a couple of plants. So as a teacher-
Testing a teacher.
As a teacher, this falls on the daily classroom formative assessment. This gave me the opportunity as a teacher to see with a couple of plants, Jana Burke, our General Counsel, who was clearly struggling just generally with addition and subtraction, while I was able to see that Ms. Shannon, our Deputy Superintendent, mastered addition but had a clear misunderstanding in looking at five minus two where she put seven. And I can quickly understand that she confuses subtraction and addition or doesn't understand the difference between those. And so now in a classroom setting, I can use this information in real-time to have most students go do an independent practice and pull a small group aside to support the students who are struggling. So when we talk about assessment, it ranges everything from that, that truly is assessing student skills, all the way up to summative assessments at the end of the year, understanding, have I mastered everything I was supposed to? So in between, we have interim assessments and these common, common formative assessment cycles. Once again, today we're gonna talk about the summative assessments, but just want to make sure that we all understand when we talk about assessment, we are talking about this full system and range. With that said, you're gonna see a lot of graphs as we go through and this is talking about the summative assessment OSTP results. The OSTP has two primary data elements that we look at. The first is the OPI score. The OPI score is a range from 200 to 400 and it falls into bands of unsatisfactory, limited knowledge, proficient, or advanced. A student who reaches 300 is typically proficient. That range, there's a few points here and there that that will move. That's the general rule. We also talk about percent of students proficient or above, so scoring proficient or advanced. Oftentimes, that is the information that we see. We're gonna talk primarily about that today. You may recall, and Dr. Gis alluded to it, that earlier in the fall, the Tulsa World did a really great article and profile of the state testing results. This, these are graphs and charts from that Tulsa World article and what we saw across the state is a decrease from the 1617 school year to the 1718 school year across virtually all grades and subjects. Here on the left side, you'll see by grade level, just for the 1718 school year, what the scores looked like. But just want to reiterate that across the state, we saw these decreases for each grade and subject area with the lone exception of seventh-grade math where it stayed exactly the same as the year before in percent of students proficient. So once again, this is the percent of students proficient, not the OPI score. In Tulsa Public Schools, we saw a decrease that was slightly less than what we saw at the state level. So with district schools and district-sponsored charter schools included in this graph, we see the English Language Arts, Mathematics, and Science scores where there was a decrease of two percentage points in English Language Arts, about three percentage points in math, and just slightly less in science. When we look at the OPI score, we see a trend that is similar with a very slight decrease in the average or mean OPI score in English Language Arts, Mathematics, and Science. This graph I added last minute, so it's not actually in your deck if you're looking at it. But just want, this is the only time you'll see the OPI score. We're not gonna show both because they'll tell roughly the same story as we're looking at them. When looking at just district schools, so not including charters, we see something very similar. A slight decrease in ELA, math, and science. And then when we look just at charters, once again, very similar. A slight decrease in ELA, math, and science from the 17, 1617 to 1718 school year. And these decreases typically less than what we saw at the state level overall. So a decrease, but not as much as the state. So I'm gonna dive into a few different breakdowns of this information. So first, starting with English Language Arts. What we see in ELA is that grade six, this is for charters, district-sponsored charters and district schools combined, grade six with the highest performance and roughly the same across the rest of grade levels. And that's with between 17 and 21% or so students performing at proficient or above, so proficient or advanced. Once again, a slight decrease for most grade levels, a slightly sharper decrease in sixth grade, and a small increase in seventh or eighth. Going once again to just the district schools, very similar story. Slight decrease with the exception of grade seven and eight. And then as we pull out only charter schools, we see roughly similar. Some of the changes here are slightly more, slightly larger and it's likely due to the smaller number of students, so you'll just see more variation. So this graph is the last time we'll look at district-sponsored charter schools or district schools because as we've seen, they're roughly the same trend. So it's all of them combined moving forward, so we don't hop through three slides on each. So we'll only see one slide for each as we move forward. So in math, we did see a decrease in each grade level except for grade seven with a three percentage point increase. Grade six was the largest decrease in percent of students And in science. Science, once again, only tested in grades five and eight. Really pretty much the same as the 1617 school year last year. So very little change in percent of students proficient or above in science, grades five and eight. We also know that it's critically important to dive a little bit deeper into where we might see gaps. So while we're looking at changes over time, also want to look at the difference between subgroups. And what we found is similar to what we see in other areas of performance, whether it be math assessments, oftentimes attendance as well, is that we're seeing lower OSTP proficiency rates for economically disadvantaged students, English language learners, and students with disabilities. As an example, provided economically disadvantaged comparisons here where in ELA, we see a difference in the 2017, 2018 school year that's pretty stark and it's roughly the same as the prior year. Same for math and science. And as we've talked about with the board before, one of our primary focus areas is exploring, understanding, and closing the gap that exists in performance between race and ethnicity groups. This graph here shows that difference. And what you'll see is that the change is roughly the same from 17, from 2016, 2017 to 2017, 2018. But the overall performance, see a clear difference with white students and Asian students far outperforming other races and ethnicities. Something that we continue to explore and dive into and want to have, Devin will talk a little bit about some of the work that's going on to support in those areas in a minute. With all that said, at the district level, we saw decreases that were similar to what we saw at the state. But we did have some bright spots and want to call those out because even in situations where it's critical to look at the facts of what we're seeing in changes, we know there's really great things going on in all of our schools and some of those great things are resulting in great outcomes. So I want to call out a few schools, you'll see more than that up here, but Mayo Demonstration Academy, which saw a six percentage point increase in English Language Arts. That's when we saw a decrease at the state level of a few percentage points. So really excited about that. You'll notice Dual Language Academy with an increase in all three subject areas tested and in fact, a science increase of 28 percentage points from the 1617 to 1718 school year. So really massive. And then with some great work that's going on at Memorial Junior High in the science area, you'll see that increase of 10 percentage points. And then others listed here. This isn't the full list of schools that saw improvements in certain areas, but certainly some that we wanted to call out. Really excited to see those improvements. With that, want to hand off to Devin Fletcher, Chief Learning Officer, to talk about what we're doing to make sure that we see additional improvements moving forward this year.
Awesome, thank you. So the promising bright spots we saw on the last slide highlight the work of transformational leadership, masterful teaching and great teachers, which directly aligns to three key focus areas that we have across the district. To support principals and leading transformational change, to ensure that we have a great teacher in every classroom, and to ensure that we have great instruction happening every day that prepares students for now but also prepares them for the unknown and ever-changing tomorrow. So as part of the work that we've done, we developed the Tulsa Way for Teaching and Learning this year. Folks on our Teaching and Learning Committee have gotten a chance to see that and we'll bring that back to another board meeting so that you can see. But it's a guide and a resource that is developed by teachers for teachers, really grounding in the practices that are necessary to, to help support novice but also experienced teachers in aligning beliefs, practices, structures, and tools for, for the work that happens every day in classrooms. The Tulsa Way is really grounded in relationships, relevance, and rigor. And one of the things that we know is that relationships are critically important. You all heard about our catapult schools and so that is one of the areas where we're focusing on building promising practices that establish strong foundations of culture and sets the culture in the stage for setting, creating a place for learning to happen at really rapid rates. Our schools are looking at their panorama data, finding ways to engage students in building confidence, persistence, and resilience. In our Empower Schools, teacher leaders are leading content teams to strengthen instructional skills aligned to college and career-ready standards. And so that's work that's happening where, again, teachers are leading the work and really focusing on how to meet the bar of the rigor that has been raised both in standards and in assessment. We also launched the Tulsa Way for Teaching, or the Tulsa Teacher Corps. And within the Tulsa Teacher Corps, that's a focus on really building a strong entry pathway for our novice teachers. We're offering professional learning that grounds our novice teachers in really understanding what assessment literacy is so that as they're entering into the classroom, they understand how to support our students both with, our students with exceptional needs and our English language learners, which is really important and critical given that's a growing population of our students. 18.6% of our students are, have exceptional needs. And so if we, if we can make a slight movement there, it's great for the entire district and so, and also improves practice for all students. And then we've also done work with all of our schools in terms of digging into the data, really understanding like their math scores and trying to figure out how we improve both instructional practice that's core, but also really focused intervention supports for our students who are struggling. And it gets back to what Stephen said. If you can understand what students are getting on the broad scale and then where students are struggling and you have meaningful opportunities to take them into small groups and really help to, help them to grow. And so we've got a lot of amazing work happening in all of our schools. We've got really powerful bright spots in, you know, our catapult cohort, our empower cohort, the Tulsa Teacher Corps. We've established the Tulsa Way for Teaching and Learning. And that's only like a small portion of the work that we're doing across the district. And this is all happening with our teachers leading the way, our school leaders being really invested in, in the work that's happening, and our students providing input and voice in every part of the process that we talked about. And so there are exciting things on the horizon. The data on the slide before showed that. And so I'm gonna pause and wait for questions if you have any.
I have a question. I know that in only the second year of testing, it's hard to identify trends or things that might be yielding the bright spots or causing issues. But I just am so perplexed by, in year one, you get these results of a brand-new test and then in the second year, once you've taken a test once, in particular for our, you know, in our race and ethnicity subgroups, just like big dives. I just, is it like, kind of like, we tried to get the flu shot to inoculate and we aimed it wrong at the test or I just, what are some of the hypotheses?
Yeah. So I think it's, it's an important question and a good question. Won't say that we know for sure, but what we do know is that there is a curve of getting used to and understanding a new system where you likely do see declines before increases. And so that is something that's not abnormal. However, what I will also acknowledge is that we can't say this is the case for sure. However, the teacher walkout happened right ahead of some of the assessment and then the assessment timeframe was really kind of tight and short last year. And so that could play into it. Once again, it's really difficult to say that that is the reason, but it's not incredibly surprising to see this dip with something new that lasts for a short time before that increase.
Because, and just as a reminder, this may be stating the obvious for everyone, but just as a reminder, it's, the, the assessment was new, the standards are also new. So that, so there's mul, there are multiple things going, going on here. So it's still a situation where we have our educators, our system, our students, we're all getting used to a different, much higher level of expectation. all getting used to a different, much higher level of expectation, much different kind of teaching, much different kind of expectations for what we want students to know and be able to do at different grade levels.
Absolutely.
Dr. Decker?
Yes, Chief Fedor. I'm less, more worried about the drop as the racial differences shown on Slide 15, which I've seen many times, but I have to admit, every time I see them, I'm like, "What?! They're really large." And I just wondered if you've done any look at racial differences within schools maybe that serve a good number of more than one race, to see if it's still happening at, you know, within a specific school?
Yep. So, we have generally, not with this specific set of data on OSTP, and we'd be happy to come back in a committee meeting and share some of the work that we've done. And what we do see is there are differences within school, but the across-school differences are larger than the within-school differences typically. And these differences, especially as we look at kindergarten, as always that where students are taking the math assessment, they start very, very, very early, typically when students are entering with the school. So, it's early and it persists, which is something that we continue to look into and try to use the data to shine a light on where the challenges exist so that we can support teachers and students where necessary.
Thanks for sharing the kindergarten part, because I work in early childhood, so that makes me think about my work and how I can help with there.
Any other questions?
Thank you. This was a good presentation in that the information was really digestible and helpful, and it was just something that we could really get our arms around. I know it's, there's much more to it, but I appreciate the work on that.
Do you have a report this evening, Dr. Guest? Actually, I skipped over board member reports and concerns, and I know Ruthann has something she would like to share.
Before we, before I pass out some information that I have, I think in lieu of us talking about our arts people that we had here this evening, we would be remiss if we didn't mention the former Nancy Feldman was the one who was really responsible. When the arts began to start dropping out in Tulsa Public Schools, she absolutely got on the bandwagon and led the parade and said, "We cannot have this." And so, I just wanted to mention Nancy Feldman. But what I had to pass out is something that we received at the regional meeting this year, and I know several of you were there, but several were not able to. But it's an advocacy toolkit from OSSBA. So, if you want to take one, if you don't have it, I think it will be helpful for you. Gives you some really good ideas on how to contact your legislators and how to do it.
Just quickly following up on that, so the election is two weeks from today, and reminder that the board voted to have everyone be out of school that day so that they can engage not just in voting, but helping in the get-out-the-vote effort, or volunteering at their poll site so that our schools can be used for voting places, and just to really show our priority of civic engagement. And I want to encourage everyone to really take that on so that we can not only get good results from the election, but also can really demonstrate how important that is for a healthy society and for, here locally, really important for who we send to the Capitol and who's leading at the Capitol. So, just want to remind everyone to not only vote that day, but engage in other ways. Also, we had a nice conversation yesterday in leadership where the League of Women Voters has offered surplus voter guides to us, and we are working through ways where we can get that shared with our families so that they can see that. And I do know that at a minimum, the voter guide is on the web, and it's also fully translated this year in Spanish. So, that's, just keep moving on progress. But the guide is very, very helpful, particularly given all the state questions that we have.
If there's no other board member reports, we have no citizens' comments this evening. And now, we'll go to Dr. Guest's report.
Thank you. I just want to go back to the arts for just a moment, and I was really grateful that you mentioned Ms. Feldman. And I want to say that we're also very fortunate. We heard at our last board meeting a little bit about Any Given Child, and we had representatives here speaking to that. And I don't think we mentioned that we have two board members sitting on the, is it the board, the advisory panel? Not sure what you're called, Mr. Percival, for Any Given Child?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So, actively involved and benefiting from that really exciting program that is available to Tulsa Public Schools. And also, didn't mention Board Member Marshall's participation in the theater ball, and we were really grateful that you represented Tulsa Public Schools at that. So, really wonderful arts programs, and we're going to continue to support the arts in Tulsa Public Schools. Also, just wanted to mention that we have our previous board member, Amy Shelton, who is here tonight, and she and her family will be leaving Tulsa as we expected was coming, but that will be happening this week. So, we wish you and your family all the best. Good to see you again. And then, also wanted to say that this week is School Safety Week, and we have a number of activities that are happening. City Year has been involved, and Chief Wicks participated. I heard about Chief Wicks participating in some of our City Year cheers and chants as, City Year certainly provides an important component in many ways to school safety, including in the building of relationships and setting of culture, and staying in close touch with students and making sure that they're on the right track. Our campus police, our school teams, meaning school leaders and teachers and others, are making school safety. We make school safety a priority every day, but during this week, we're doing more to highlight school safety, to make sure that we're actively engaging folks in keeping our school community safe every day. So, one of the things that we are formally launching this week is our See, Hear, Share initiative. And this came about because last year, we realized that there are, we've seen experiences where young people or teachers have seen something that concerned them, or in some cases, parents, and they've notified a school official about that, and we've been able to resolve a situation. And we know that there is nothing more important to keeping our kids safe than prevention. So, we practice drills, we practice protocols, we make sure we have policies, but prevention is really the best thing that we can do to prevent any kind of an incident, making sure that our buildings are prepared, our students and teachers are prepared, but also that we say something when we see something or hear something. So, See, Hear, Share came about as a result of that. We also realized that people may not always know who to tell and may not realize that we actually have a campus police department, and we are staffed 24/7. And so, we are using this week to really highlight that we now have an easily, number that's easy to remember. So, it's 918-480-SAFE. And the way I think about it is 48, you know, that we're going to be doubly safe, 480-SAFE. So, that is the number for people to remember if they ever see something or hear something and need to share it. That's the place to call. You can also email share@tulsschools.org. And so, this week, we, all of our schools are receiving cards for our students with the See, Hear, Share phone number and email address on it. And while we, you know, hope that people do not feel the need to use it because they don't see something that concerns them, we very strongly encourage anyone who sees something or hears something to share it with us so that we can make sure that we address any issues and keep, continue to keep our students and teachers and other team members safe every day. And that concludes my report. Madam President?
Thank you, Dr. Guest. Hopefully, See, Hear, Share will become something like Stop, Drop, and Roll. I hope. Is there any nonroutine items or new business this evening, Mr. Wade?
No.
Okay. So, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss evaluations of the superintendent as authorized by Title 25, Section 307, B1 and B7 of the Oklahoma statutes.
Yes.
Second. Just for everyone's information, we'll go into an executive session, and we will come down and adjourn and do the announcements, but we don't anticipate any other business this evening. I'll call for the vote. Ms. Wester?
Aye.
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 You adjourn to executive session.